At this time, I'll call the Warren County School Board meeting to order. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second and any discussion. All in favor say aye. Pose like sign. Motion passes. This time, I'd like to ask Mr. Best to lead the sentence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united on, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second and any discussion. All in favor say aye. Pose like sign. Motion passes. Do we have student advisory with us tonight?
I think we do, though. They may be.
They're vacationing. Summer break.
We're taking this vacation, but way too seriously, aren't we?
Alright, we will move on, we'll go to recognitions. Ms. Wynton, step on the... This comes with money.
I know. She told me, she said I'm not gonna talk to you.
Well, you are our employee of the year.
Thank you so much.
For 2015-16. Dawn takes care of teaching classes on, uh, not online, what's that called?
Through a distance lab, so it's using that technology.
Yeah, distance learning, I'm sure for distance learning. She teaches math to all of our, having their county schools.
Well, at, this year, we did three, yeah.
Three county schools, three of the high schools.
Well, two county schools and the high school, yeah.
So, she does a very important part of our education, especially in the math. Of course, Dawn's an expert in that person, so. I'm sure people would love to have her, but you have been used to it for a hundred dollars.
Thank you.
Employee of the year, and also may apply for being the employee of the year.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Alright, at this time, we'll have our operations report. Mr. Cox.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
It's 23.
Several things on our operation report tonight. One, I think that you had, we've provided you some information from Zach Sutton regarding research project that he is in, involved with our track program and along with Rutherford County Schools. And the program would, is designed, I think, and information that you got was to test our track athletes before, do training with them during their season and during their conditioning, in an effort to reduce injuries on the back end. So, the testing part of it will take approximately 10 minutes for each student. Zach would be onsite. Many of you know Zach, he's a Losons physical therapist and works with our sports programs. You know, it doesn't cost us anything, he's always been pretty generous about his services, and we appreciate him being willing to do this. I think it's a good opportunity, I think he's talked to Mr. Walker, he's talked to our trainer, Mr. McIntosh, and they're all in agreement. And just I'd like to ask the board, or I can answer any questions about it for number one, but just like to ask the board to approve this and allow Zach to work with our cross-country team, this research project.
Now, would we have to do a contract with him or anything to do this, or is it just?
I don't think so. I mean, there's no money, there's no money involved. He's just really providing the service and he'll gather the research from it. We'll have to provide him, you know, just the data and things of that type and access to the students. But other than that, I think we're good. We would just, if the board approves it, we'll just send him a letter in writing, you know, saying that it's approved by the board and he can proceed, and he'll work with Mr. McIntosh with the program.
He's also, is an employee, he also contracts with us, other, with our special ed students, so he's already gone through the appropriate background checks and such for that.
Well, I want to move to endorse and support the proposal. I think anytime the school system can be part of some serious research and maybe expanding the horizons of knowledge, I think that's a good thing. And Zach, Zach is an all-around good citizen. If you may, you may remember that Zach led the campaign that gave us the, what we call the PDS Project at Hickory Creek, the all-inclusive playground, and was also very active in our HCM screenings, maybe three years ago along with trainer Tim, so. You know, I would enthusiastically support that, and that's my motion, I would move to endorse the proposal.
Do we have a motion to approve the track research project, do I have a second?
A second.
Have a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Pose like sign. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next proposal is, goes along with that, the, we have a middle school track program currently, but they want to expand into cross-country and provided a proposal, a letter from Mr. Tidwell, that I provided you, and it would be part of the CTC conference, and we would be able to provide them a supplement, and the team would hopefully be made up of about 25 to 30 boys and girls on the team. And I think it would be a great opportunity to get more students involved in that program and maybe keep them involved through the high school. So, I think it's a good opportunity, and I'd recommend approval.
Do we have a motion to approve?
A motion.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Pose like sign. Motion passes.
Thank you very much. In the same vein, it seems like we're endeavoring to get more students involved and other things as well, so our color guard, winter guard program, Mr. Walker has kind of been instrumental with that program along with Lindsay Eldridge and at the high school. And a few weeks ago, we did allow for our dance team to move down into the middle grades to kind of have a theater program with them, and Ms. Eldridge is asking that if we can do the same for their color guard program for sixth, seventh, and eighth. I think, again, it's a good opportunity. The front-end cost would be dealt with through, you know, registration fees and fundraising and things of that type. We would supply the coaching supplement for the sponsor for the color guard, winter guard, and again, I think we get more students involved and they may stay involved throughout, and I think it's a small plot price to pay to get more students involved in that program. So, we provided that information to you, the plan of action for the color guard, winter guard was from Mr. Walker and how they're going to work at the high school level, and then the second page that you've already seen, I'm sure already looked at, would be the cadet winter guard, that would be the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. I would recommend that we move this direction as well, and try to answer any questions that you might have.
Do we have a motion to approve the middle school winter guard?
So moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second, any discussion?
Is that going to be one supplement or two?
I think it is one supplement.
Okay.
Yes, for that level. And we do have two at the high school, because we did have a color guard that works with a band, a band at winter guard that does competition.
Is that something that was already in place, or is that something you're?
It's something we take with over the last few years.
Just to meet the dividing line, basically? Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Pose like sign. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next is Algebra I Integrated Math Blended Learning Pilot. I think we've provided that information to you, and since Ms. Wynton's here, you know, when she wins an award, we just give her more responsibility. So, she has agreed, this is an opportunity through the state to get some training and a grant opportunity for us, that we can move into Algebra I Integrated Math in a blended learning effort with some online training, and I think, I don't know if you've been, Dawn, have you been with the training?
The training is the 11th, 12th, and 13th of July, but I have, before the end of the year, I've got into the software that they're, or the program that they're going to be providing. I even had some students who, that last week, school, get online and go through some of it. So, I started to look at it, I saw that more after.
After the training, okay. And the blended learning is a lot like what we're getting into with our virtual program that we're getting ready to start. There'll be opportunities for online segments as well as classroom segments. So, you know, the state is offering this opportunity, we applied for it, they accepted our proposal, Mr. Walker and I think Mr. Curtis are in favor, and Dawn is willing to take it on, and I think it's a great opportunity for us, and just need the board's approval to proceed with that and send in the paperwork.
Do we have a motion to approve the pilot?
A motion.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Pose like sign. Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much, more work for Dawn. Our 90% reading O, Autumn, you want to talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, a little bit, it's slowed down a little bit now that we're in the summer, but one of the most important things that we've got going on is summer reading. At elementary schools, we've got summer reading programs where they've also received free books to give away to kids at Magnus Library and Wilson Library, and also kids in the community. So, we've got lots of opportunities for kids to participate in summer reading programs and also to receive books. Another opportunity for summer reading is through our Myon program, which is free to us this summer through the TOS partnership, and I have some numbers for that. As of about a week ago, as of June 6th, our students all across the district had read 2,864 books, which amounts to 640 hours of time STEM reading. So, really good numbers there. Just at Hickory Creek alone, over 1,000 books have been read. So, very pleased with that. I'll also share that we're wrapping up this summer, our training that we've been conducting with teachers, we've got the K3 reading course going on. We also finished up, as of yesterday, I think, with the K3 intervention reading course that we've been offering. So, we're starting to really see a change, I think, in the way teachers are talking and even administrators are talking. I can tell just by, you know, different interactions with them and, you know, through things like the focus school grants that two of our schools are submitting, there's a really, really big focus on early grade three. And I think from a couple of years ago, our administrators and our teachers, like I said, are really thinking about that in a different way, which is what we need. So, I think our work is paying off slowly but surely in multiple ways. That's all I have.
If you'd like to attend the summer reading program at Deborah, you can also pick up free vegetables from the community garden.
Sure.
I think the principal was selling peas whenever I was there.
Taking care of those out there, that's great news.
That's nice. I would mention for the board's benefit that Autumn was kind enough to join us in a WCPI interview session today with the executive director from the Discovery Center in Murfreesboro, and her newly hired director for audience and community engagement, or whatever that title is. And they were totally in perfect alignment with Autumn, that the early childhood literacy, of course, we know that as the old saying goes, is fundamental, but we were talking about that relationship to math and science, learning, and the, just the absolute necessity of developing vocabulary early on.
Yes.
And so, that program will be on the air next week, but, you know, when we got to that point, we're talking about STEM subjects, and we traditionally seem to think, well, we'll do that in high school, maybe middle school, that's way too late. And I think there's an emerging awareness that that needs to start, these people in the Discovery Center said, at age three.
Alright.
Well, I'm interested in making sure our pre-K students get that benefit, and we can certainly do that in pre-K.
Yep.
And then follow that up, of course, we have each year follow that up, you know, they start attending in kindergarten, so I think we have lots of opportunities to combine, combine the literacy and STEM in all subjects for that matter.
Thank you, Autumn, appreciate that. Next item is our differentiated pay plan. This is a plan, I provided you the information about that in the packet. Every year, we have to submit a differentiated pay plan. Last year, we got with our principals, tried to fit our differentiated pay plan within our budget. We did an 11-month for our instructional coordinators, so they could work during the summertime at the principal's request to prepare for professional development and things of that type. That seems to have worked out really well, and we had two principals that served as mentors to younger principals. We'd like to continue to submit and do the same, use the same process, it worked out very well last year, and I think principals are all in agreement to continue on that same plan. It fits very well in our budget, that's not exceeding our budget, and we have to turn this in to the state after board approval by June the 30th. So, I'll answer any questions that you may have about the differentiated pay plan, but I just need your approval, recommend we continue the plan that we're on currently.
Do we have a motion to approve the differentiated pay plan?
Motion.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Pose like sign. Motion passes.
Alright, thank you, we'll get that sent out tomorrow. Also, continuing on the work that we've done this year through our retreats, we've prepared our salary schedules for the coming year, our supplement schedules, which add in the things that we approved, we approved tonight with the track and the winter guard program, also put the supplements in, in the proper scale now for our new basketball programs at West Elementary, Bobby Ray, and Hickory Creek, have those in the supplement package. So, I think everything is up to date, as it needs to be for 16-17. Job descriptions, you'll notice in our salary schedules, as we, board asked, that we kind of designed pay levels for our custodians, levels one through fours currently the way they are, as well as our school nutrition, to allow them to start off at an entry level and grow into that level of the experience and training, so it gives them an opportunity to do that. And we have the job descriptions to go along with that. Also, job description for Carl's previous position that was at the high school that we did last year. Last year, that position was funded at 70% grant, 30% local. We did apply for the grant again, and we knew that the grant would drop and finally go away, but it was, it's 50% this year, and it'll probably drop to 30% next year if we continue to do that. But Carl's work, I think he did an outstanding job with that. We got with Carl and Jimmy and revised the job description to be more of a graduation coach, still working with eighth grade at-risk students, but also working more as a graduation coach and looking for more of a counseling aspect of that as well, to kind of help some students move into post-secondary. We also have an opportunity to get another grant that Carl and I are working on, that Governor Haslam's just announced, to maybe add another counselor specifically for helping students apply and push, not really push them to go to college, but to conquer the hurdles to go to college. So, that would be something that Carl's got a webinar on the 28th, so he can do that. So, the position that we funded last year will be virtually doing the same thing, it'll just be funded 50% of its 50% grant, and we've made it an 11-month, instead of 12-month position to kind of fit in the budget, and those are, those job descriptions are there. So, we do need approval for that, so that we can move into 16-17, but I'll try to answer any questions that you all have about that.
Okay, well, this coach will work with the, you know, we've been talking about the counselors.
Yes, oh yes, yes.
Work with the counselors closely.
Yes. Well, actually, Carl evaluated the counselors this year, and, you know, this person, whoever comes in, will have to post the job, you know, to see who applies, but we're looking for, I think somebody, Jimmy and Carl can correct me if I'm wrong, but has more of a counseling background, not necessarily administrative background, to work with that.
Who is, who is identifying the at-risk students coming in to the high school now? How does that?
He was.
Counselors from the eighth grade, eighth grade, you know, students were identified by their counselor. I worked with them throughout the year, so we knew coming into the building, and then once they are at the high school, we work together with the counselors, identify anybody that's been retained, that would go to the top of my list, and then get them enough credits to move on to be a 10th or 11th or 12th grader in the building, so those automatically went on my list, and as the year went by, we would use the fail list to identify even more, so from failures in attendance, even behavior. System principals would also, you know, recommend I start working with some of them.
So, is that, will you continue to do that?
No.
Or would that be?
That would be that person.
That'd be the graduation coach, that's specifically in the job description.
So, very likely.
Continue to work with that.
Yes.
Yeah, we don't want to, that's, you know, Carl and I talked a lot about that, and that's, I'm really passionate about us doing that, that we catch those kids and be that safety net early, before they get to the high school, so that we can get a plan in place for them, so they can be successful. And he's, I mean, we've had calls, you know, through the summer, through the year, even on down into the elementary grades, you know, not just eighth graders, that he's worked with and worked with their families. That's really kind of what we want.
Yeah, you did an awesome job, you got some big shoes to fill, because that's a big job.
Very rewarding.
Yes.
Never worked harder, but it was so rewarding, you know, getting work with those students.
Yeah. You know, it's a mentoring thing also, and, you know, somebody with a lot of character like you have, and the drive to push those kids, that's big. So, I hope we, I hope we can fill that with somebody that does as well as you did.
That'll be, I don't know, that'll be, it'll be under Jimmy's leadership there.
A friend.
Yeah.
Thanks, Doc.
Yeah, no problem, right under the bus. There.
Well, and Jimmy does a good job of that, too.
Yeah, he does.
Jimmy's a great mentor to those kids, and that's big, you know, just letting them know you care, you know, especially those at-risk kids, and somehow, Mr. Walker knows how to grab them by the shoulder, identify them, and put his arm around them real quick, so.
I'm going to have to use the word choker.
Well, I think I had one put around my shoulder when I entered high school, too. Mr. Bud Wright introduced himself real quick.
I just, I think some of you were, you know, we just had a little informal discussion on graduation evening, and just thinking, there's no way of knowing for sure, maybe you could come up with some sort of credible estimate of the 420 number of graduates we had, how many of them would not have been walking across the stage if it had not been for Mr. Curtis and Mr. Walker and other people who just got personally involved in making sure they were successful. I think it's something that has to be done intentionally, it has to be done consistently, and I'm very glad to hear that you have a consistent program for passing up the information from counselors in the lower grades, you know, I've kind of expressed some concerns about the consistency of our overall counseling program, you know, we've had those discussions, but, but, you know, there's a certain percentage of those who got a regular diploma that would not have, if it hadn't been for Mr. Curtis and a lot of teachers and strongly motivated principals, I mean, it's just a fact.
Correct.
They would not have gotten that diploma.
I agree, I agree.
So, we.
Well, we continue to, you know, as, just like with Dawn, you know, good work is rewarded by more work, so Carl can, you know, he can manage that as well, as he, as we all do. So, just need the approval to move forward with salary schedule supplements, job descriptions for 16-17.
I did want to ask one other question, I did talk to Mr. Cox about this. On the supplement side for the custodians, there's about a 50 cent difference between grade one and four. And we have two schools that have a whole lot of extracurricular activities, which are the middle school and high school. They have a lot of students, so I've asked him to look at possibly a category for those two schools, so that differentiation and pay is much greater than 50 cents, or whatever that is.
A thousand dollars a year.
Yeah, comes to a true, yeah, basically a thousand dollars a year. I think, I think there's more of a pay structure we can put in for those, and really, we're talking to people that lead those schools, that I think it's probably well-deserved, budget-wise, and you're not talking a lot of money, but since it's only two people, the experience team probably means we need to pass the way it is tonight and look at it in the future, so.
Yeah, we'll work on that and bring that back, you know, in July, and try to get that where the board wants that to be and fit in our budget and everything. I think, you know, we've tried to work pretty hard to try to get those levels lined out, you know, the next big hurdle will be when we send this out tomorrow to all the principals and get them to identify where our current school nutrition staff and custodians fit on the level one through four. You know, it's easy when hiring new people in, they're going to start at level one, be able to work out, so we're going to rely on our principals to be able to help us do that. But we'll work through that process and, you know, reward them for their work and work on the level five for those two schools, because they do have 900-plus students, you know, they've got 500, at the middle schools, you're talking 900, so that's 500 more than most of our other schools that are K8, and then, of course, the high school is 18, so I can understand that, we'll work on that, get that back much as well.
And I'd just like to say, I agree with the chairman on that, just think what would happen if you didn't have, well, Miss Connie and Pam, you know, you'd have a train wreck, because nobody else knows, you know, what the, what those switches on the wall do.
Right.
And they've got the keys.
Maybe we could identify if you have over more than 30 keys on your P M.
Yeah. It doesn't seem Miss Connie's key, right? Must weigh 15 pounds, yeah.
That's true.
Yes, it weighs about those keys. I want to, I want to move, Mr. Chairman, if it's appropriate and in order for adoption of the classified pay scale and supplement scale.
Do you want to include in that the job description?
Yeah, in the job description, yes.
Alright, we need to probably include all salary schedules.
Okay, let's amend that to, I'm moving to adopt all salary schedules and supplement schedules and job descriptions as presented by Mr. Cox.
Alright, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Pose like sign. Motion passes.
Thank you. Pull two policies out, policy IHAV and policy IHI, and that, those two policies have to do with reporting to parents and are, really are report cards. And we are, with all of the changes over the years, Autumn and many of our teachers have worked to build standards-based report cards, and those have been a labor of love, but they've also been an issue ongoing because of standards changes and things of that type. So, we constantly have to go back in and revise those standards-based report cards. So, when our, at our principals retreat this year, what we discussed was to be able to provide a reporting to parents that would be more consistent with our grade scale, that is not necessarily standards-based, right? that is not necessarily standards-based right now. Uh, but we are working, Autumn's already started to work with, uh, with teachers on revising those standards-based report cards. So, you know, what I need, I guess, for the board to do if, uh, technically, since the policy is in place, would be to waive the report card portion of the policy for two thousand sixteen seventeen. And then we'll work on that and then get that ready for seventeen eighteen. Uh, so that what we would be doing is, is really just going back to our previous, uh, reporting process where they're getting, uh, you know, a plus or minus if it's in the early grades. And then they'd be getting an A, B, C, D, F by the grade scale on three, well, really two through twelve. Um, and then we're gonna continue to work on that reporting part of a standards-based report card to give parents more, uh, pertinent information in less than a three-ring binder every time we have set it home. Um, so I guess to be technical about that, we would ask, you know, need the board's approval to do that uh, because our report cards do need work and, you know, we just haven't had time to get those done. And the standards are constantly changing, which they shouldn't change, hopefully for the next three years, we hope.
Do we have a motion to waive the report card requirements for two thousand sixteen seventeen?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'll move to waive the report card, uh, provision of the relevant policies.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion passes.
Thank you, we'll work diligently to get that taken care of before they come in here. Um, a couple of other items, just under other business that, uh, need to bring up. And I hate to bring these up as this, but we just received those today and yesterday before the agenda was sent out. Um, on your desk, there's a, uh, industry certification for animal science pilot. It's a memorandum of understanding, um, between us and the Department of Education uh, so that we can offer this industry certification, uh, exam to our students. I think Tracy has looked at that and she is in agreement with it. I think Robin, have you looked at that as well? And, uh, uh, we just need the board's approval to, uh, proceed with that. Doesn't, doesn't cost us any money. It's, uh, just a, you know, the opportunity to offer this to our students that they can take the animal science exam, uh, and earn the industry certification at the end of the course.
I think we're one of twenty in the state.
That applied for that.
I make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between the Warren County School Board and Tennessee Department of Education for the, uh, specific industry certification for animal science.
Now, we have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion passes.
Uh, one other item that just got to that, as a matter of fact, and wasn't able to get this, uh, out to you. But for, I guess, the last, as long as I can remember, I mean, Mr. Ron Martin was the director at the adult high school when we got the opportunities grant through local workforce investment. And it's a state grant, uh, Ms. Ron DePellum runs that grant currently. Um, and as you know, we're kind of transitioning away from, uh, that grant, restructuring that program. Uh, but we still wanted to stay in the hopper because it's a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar grant that we get annually. Um, the, uh, virtual program will offset some of that where students are gonna be, opportunities to be more blended and stay at the high school. Uh, that's probably going to the annex, but the ones that do go there are concentrated on students who maybe are coming back, that have dropped out, that are going into workforce, things of that type. So this grant has been ongoing for at least fifteen, twenty years, I would think. Well, at least fifteen years that I know of. Um, the, uh, from the grant, it pays for, get over to the grant page. It pays one, two, three, four part-time people, um, that work in the program. It, it pays for Ms. Pellum who runs the program. Uh, and then it also pays part of instructor salary that is at the, uh, annex now. Um, so I've talked with the workforce investment folks. They understand our transition, uh, from the normal program to the virtual program. Uh, but they are willing to still supply the money in the grant and will try to work through any of those issues that we have. Um, so just wanted, since we are changing that just a little bit, um, the contract has been approved. Uh, Karen's looked at it, the contract is good for the, through them. The workforce, uh, investment folks have approved it through their board. Um, only thing that we really pay out of that is some benefits and part of the salary uh, that we would be paying anyway. And then plus, it's a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar grant that we get, so. Um, and like I said, we've had it for the last fifteen years. But since we did have some changes, I just wanted the board's approval to proceed with that. It's nothing that we hadn't already done, uh, but I just got that today. And I know we weren't gonna have another meeting until July. Uh, and I'll be glad to let you see this if you wanna look at it, but I feel very comfortable with recommending it. And like I said, I got it at three o'clock today.
Okay, you request the approval for the submission of it?
No, for the, to proceed with the program as we've done the last fifteen years.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign.
And we will get you a copy of this and, and there is options in the contract to pull out of it if needed. So if you see something that there's an issue, but like I said, it, it's run very smoothly for the last fifteen years. It'll be the same program. You know, appreciate you, uh, trusting me on that and moving forward on that one. Um, just one more item that I wanted to bring up. We did get our fresh, fresh fruit and vegetable grant again this year, uh, twenty-five thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars. So that will be at West Elementary School, so that's a good thing. Uh, we are also, wanted to report to the board and will reiterate this again, but Ms. Vicki Dodd has done outstanding job with our safety program from the district level this year. We had our, uh, inter-agency safety training with the State Department of Education. And actually, they said we were, uh, kind of leading the way in this effort with, uh, the new templates and the new, uh, program, uh, that they have worked on. And, uh, we have organized, and this will be something for the community as well, but, uh, on August the sixteenth, uh, at Warren County High School, uh, six o'clock to eight o'clock P M, uh, Homeland Security will be hosting a seminar on sudden violence and surviving an active shooter incident. And, uh, we will get this out to, uh, you know, the media closer to time. Uh, but we, I feel like it is a good seminar to have, uh, that we can invite parents in and go over kind of some scenarios and things of that type, uh, with regard to school safety. And, uh, I think it'd be a good opportunity for that to happen. So just wanted to bring that to you.
What, what page is it, in August, what did you say?
Sixteen.
August the sixteenth.
Six o'clock.
Six P M to eight P M at the high school auditorium. And we'll be getting more information out about that. Is that everything? We do, we will have one, I wonder, the business, uh, at the end of the meeting. But I think we have everything, I hope we have. And I appreciate the patience, we've tried to get everything in before the end of the year. So, uh, personnel report, personnel report's in your packet. We, we are continuing to hire folks. Uh, recommendations are being made by principals, they're going through the hiring process. Our new portal, um, is up and running, working through the kinks with that uh, to make this a completely electronic process, uh, for our new incoming, uh, employees. And we have a new onboarding process that goes through Roy where they don't have to go from department to department. Comes through him, he handles all of that onboarding for them. So, uh, if you've got any questions, I'll try to answer those.
How many positions we have up, roughly?
I'd have to go look and see. Um, I know, I think we've hired, at last count, about thirteen new, uh, teachers that were, um, either non-renewals or retirements. Uh, we did absorb a position and a half up here, uh, through retirement. We were repurposing one position, I think Ms. Willmore's not coming back. We're gonna repurpose that position that's been posted and hadn't, haven't made a hire on that yet. Uh, we did absorb two part-time positions just due to budget that was at West Elementary and a retirement position that she's gonna repurpose there and we had the ability to do that. So can't really, I, I don't know how many more we have out there open. But we did have one other retirement today and up until June thirty, we'll probably have some more people retiring, so.
On, on replacing, uh, those that are retiring or going elsewhere, uh, I guess there's three areas, you know, that I've expressed before where I have some concerns. And just wondering if you're having any challenges in filling positions in high school math and science and in our, among our interventionists?
Uh, interventionist, we usually repurpose teachers who are experienced teachers and highly effective in the classroom into the intervention roles. Uh, high school math is always a problem. Uh, but we have gone a little bit different route this year on that. Uh, I got with Dr. Kinkel at Motlow and asked him if he would be interested in maybe partnering on a person that would, uh, teach math part-time at Motlow, part-time for us and split the cost. And he was willing to do that. So we have hired a person to, uh, do that, Mr. Walker, and was in on the interviews of that along with Ms. Edmonds. So that's a new endeavor and hopefully, long-term, that person will be able to, uh, uh, stay with us and do some upper-level math at the high school. So that was a good, good way to partner there and, and we were able to attract some more folks that way in math. But Jimmy and Roy, they've been to John Fickers at Tech and I don't know where all else. And any, anybody that even hints that they have a math certification, we're on, so.
I thought you had one last year and slipped away from it.
We had two last year.
They slipped out, slipped off the hook.
They, they went back to where they were from, but we had them hired, so.
Sweet.
But that, that is an ongoing, uh, but we're, you know, I think we're gonna be able to staff our math openings this year uh, and then add that, that halftime position there. And, you know, kind of the way we're funding that is we're gonna, uh, go halftime with another position and take that part and be able to do the halftime there. So we're not adding any positions.
Okay. Uh, just so again, I think, maybe with leadership from the National Science Foundation, which is always talking about, uh, making favorable noises about training the teachers who will be teaching STEM subjects, you know, if the Congress wanted to do anything good for us, they would do something about supporting the college education teachers who are committed to doing that.
Right.
Enough saying, I won't, I started off so.
Um, I think we're, we've also got our math teachers in our elementary schools this year going to training this summer so they can do that one, uh, at the elementary level. So we're getting them that training as well, so. We're trying, we've, we've tried to grow our own and, and everything we can to get math folks. That's our operations report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Cox, uh, correct on my achievement, Mr. Zegman.
Okay, uh, on first reading, uh, if you look, it's on page one oh one of your pretty bulky package today. Um, one-on-one, uh, on first reading you have, and we'll just take these pretty quickly, J G C A A A, uh, treatment, prevention and treatment of sports-related concussions. Uh, Robin, Bobby, do you wanna say anything about?
Uh, this is a change in the law that we got with the last legislative session. Um, and all it does is add a, that a physician's assistant can be a medical provider that, that evaluates of that condition. And so we have changed our policy to keep up with the law.
Okay, that's good. Uh, let's look at that third one, C R, the cardio pulmonary resuscitation. And basically, this is going to require that each school have someone certified and trained, cross-certified.
Uh, yes, we already have somebody cross-certified at each school. And so what we did was, we did have, we needed to update this policy because of a change in the law from the legislature that required a drill, uh, at each school, uh, for A E D. So when we were changing the policy, uh, there were some other things in there that we just clarified. And we do already have a certified person at each school, that's our nurses. And, and they do, um, training with the other folks on their team. We added school resource officers on that since all schools have that now. And then we add the language about the training, I mean, the drill. Um, also, the students who take, um, CPR and they take that in the eighth grade, um, actually, I think it's junior high and senior high, um, students that take that and they usually take that as a wellness class, um, at the high school. And some take it also as a, I think it's teen leaving or something in the lower grades. They do do a CPR class and who, at the time that they do CPR, they are now supposed to also have sort of an introductory A E D training. So we've added that to the policy as well. And those students would also be able to be included in the drill that they do at the school level each year. And basically, I think that's all the changes.
Okay. And, uh, I'm gonna move for the, adoption of all three at one time. And then let's talk about J C A D, prohibition against discrimination, harassment, bullying, intimidation, and hazing of students. I see there was a lot of update and change in, in the language.
Uh, yes, and of course, we just passed it some second reading in March and then the legislature changed it. So we needed to update that again. Um, so basically, the main change is going to be in the investigative portion, um, which is on page two, starting on twenty, um, or twenty-two, I'm sorry. The main change is, uh, on twenty, line twenty-eight, twenty-nine, the investigation of a bullying incident will be initiated within forty-eight hours of a received report. And appropriate intervention shall be instituted within twenty days of the incident. Uh, that's, that's required by the new law. Um, also, there were just some things in, uh, the law that we have not in the past necessarily said per se in our policy because they are state law. And, uh, the advice of the, of Christie Ballard at the General Counsel for the, for Tennessee Department of Ed was to make sure everybody put every line of that statute in, um, their policy as well. So I went ahead and put anything in there that we did not have specifically in there so that we would make sure that should it come up, it's in there. And the last change that's, um, of any real interest to you would probably be the notice to parent or legal guardian. And that just says that if you, uh, if there is a report, that shall be given to the parent, legal guardian immediately. Um, and we shall also tell them about availability of counseling and support services that might be necessary. That's also another part of the new law. Those are the changes.
And on page two from line, I guess, forty-five, forty-four and a half, all over to page, uh, three through line five, there's that language about, uh, the counseling.
Yes.
And says, "Students involved in an act of harassment, intimidation, bullying, or sabotaging shall be referred for appropriate counseling and support services when deemed necessary by the principal." When it says, "Students involved in an act of harassment," I'm assuming that means victim and perpetrator?
It could be anybody. It could be bystander, victim, or perpetrator as the principal deems necessary.
On line four, it says, "The principal or the principal's duty designee." Who would that be besides the principal?
Uh, well, normally, the principal, um, you know, obviously is in charge of the school. But oftentimes, they do have someone that does their, their investigations for them. So that would give that person also the option to refer that. them, so that would give that person also the option to refer that, uh, on, um, as well as the principal determining that.
Could be the assistant principal counselor.
Right, like in, at the high school, you know, that would give, they have such a big student population that those folks could go ahead and do that, um, under Mr. Walker's authority if he allows them to do that.
You know, one of the, uh, one of the big takeaways of the policy is the reporting requirements, and of course, that's, that's embodied in law, and, you know, if we, if we can learn some lessons from the grief of, in other school systems, is the appropriate and very timely reporting, which means basically immediate reporting of, of the change.
And we reiterated that at our principal's retreat in light of certain situations, so that we spent a good long time on, on that, how to report that, when that should be reported, uh, and, uh, I think everybody's on the same page with that.
And reporting, and we'll also have a, a policy on hazing specifically in July that will also address, I think, maybe part of what you're talking about, that also requires reporting to outside agencies as well as through the school system, and to parents, and to appropriate staff, and all those folks.
I think one of the lessons we've learned here again from, from the disasters of others is we don't try to handle this by ourselves, and we, we go through the whole reporting process. Well, Mr. Chairman, if, uh, if it's in order, I'm gonna move for adoption in mass of policies, uh, first reading, revised policies, JGCAA, JCAD, and CR, that's my motion.
All right, we have a motion to approve the three policies on the first reading, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, one last thing on second reading of policy IDFAA, interscholastic athletics transfer rule, uh, we discussed that, uh, in some detail at the last meeting, so I'm gonna move, uh, if it's in order, for adoption on second reading of IDFAA.
So, we have a motion to approve IDFAA on second read, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion passes.
And that completes the business for curriculum and achievement, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Zegman. Uh, facilities and resource, resources, Mark?
Thank you. Uh, first, I'm gonna, um, give a report on the three projects of Irving College, um, the new parts finished, the classrooms, uh, finished, cafeteria's complete, uh, except they're working on the equipment at this time, the administrative space is being worked on in the old part, uh, the fire alarm, uh, is being upgraded, the gym, of course, is a hundred percent finished, the decorations in the cafeteria are being done, uh, the secure entrance, entrance is being installed. Uh, Bobby Gray, the old floor, uh, the gym is gone, uh, block work, uh, had to be done, uh, 'cause it had asphalt under the floor, uh, they've ordered new material for the floor to begin in midweek of next week. The bleacher project is, uh, moving along, and painting is started in the gym. The high school, of course, is finished, uh, and is, uh, under, still under a warranty period, uh, overseeded grass, uh, is having to be done because we've had no rain. Out of the committee, uh, motion was made second and passed about, uh, constructing a forty-six by eighty metal insulated building, uh, that will be used for the maintenance, uh, storage. We'll have a two-foot landing dock, concrete floor, uh, will be finished off, uh, internally. Uh, the contract, uh, the lowest bid was one fifty-seven-five by Seine. Um, I'd like to, uh, have a motion, uh, that we, um, pass this in, in the board meeting.
And we have the construction of the maintenance building at a cost of one hundred fifty-seven-thousand-five-hundred, um, to approve the bid and proceed with construction, do I have a motion?
Motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you. Turn it back into your hands.
All right, are there any other committees that need to report? All right, any other business?
I think we do have one other item of business, Mr. Chairman, um, the workshop, TSBA workshop, um, delegates and workshops and annual conference, I think we, Deena needs to know who will be attending the, the delegate assembly, I want to say, and, uh, so we can send that in, so. I can't, I can't attend, so.
I normally go.
It's on Monday or Tuesday, it's on Monday.
It's on, uh, Sunday, no?
Sunday, it's on Sunday, I hadn't looked at the schedule.
We're allowed.
It used to be on Monday night, it was four.
Four, yeah.
I think, let's see.
Four.
Last year, it was me and you and Tanya and Nick.
Yeah.
Also.
Okay, now.
I'll go.
Okay.
I'll go, but I, I'll, I'll withdraw if you've got four filled from somewhere else.
That's. I chose not to attend this year, seeing that I'll be coming off the board in September, I figured it's probably money spent better elsewhere, so.
How many is that?
There's, uh.
Bill, it used to be.
If Bill, Mr. Bennett or Ms. Martin wants to go, I mean, that's a, Bill said he would decline.
No, I'll, I'll refer to anybody else, I just.
Bill would be first.
Four.
I'm gonna make sure to make sure you have four.
If you wanna go, I guess, then.
All right, I can sit down, 'cause I was, I did it last year, so.
I don't think Mr. Bennett went last year to the delegate assembly, right?
Right.
So it might be good.
Will anybody be presenting anything, Mr. Chairman?
Right now, we don't have anything but come to July session, if it's possible, but we need, we need to discuss that.
So we need four there, really.
Yeah, if you're, if you're presenting anything, you need, you need full delegation.
Is there any other business?
I, I'm not gonna take time now, maybe the next meeting I can report, uh, that Ms. Martin and I attended the NSBA, uh, events, uh, the Advocacy Institute, uh, in Washington a couple of weeks ago, uh, made the rounds on Capitol Hill, visited with our congressional delegations, uh, with Congressman Dejrelle, a personal meeting with him, and, uh, with the Jim Cooper, who's not in our district, he's over in the fifth district, he used to represent the fourth district, had a, had a very productive meeting with him, actually, it's his staff person who really gets the job done in, in the education matters, uh, met with, uh, Senator Alexander's Chief of Staff, as a matter of fact, we kinda had Chief of Staff all to ourselves, we kinda had a private audience with Chief of Staff, and, uh, also with, uh, Senator Porter's staff. Of course, one of the big issues this year was the Carl D. Perkins Act, uh, reauthorization, which is kinda like, uh, the ESSA, it's kinda long overdue, it's been sustained on continuing, uh, budget resolutions from year to year, but that's the CTE program, that's the big funding, federal funding piece for career technical education, and all in all, the, uh, well, it is, you know, elected here, of course, but, you know, they were very agreeable and expressed support for, for NSBA positions by and large. For more complete reports, you'll have to wait till later, we're all kinda tired this evening.
Deena would also like to, uh, welcome Dr. Jesse Redster.
Yeah.
With us this evening, a former superintendent of schools in metro Nashville, and working now with, uh, Belmont University, and working with four county schools within our collaborative, so welcome him tonight, and, and we're going into a workshop session after the meeting's over with, working on our vision, mission, and beliefs, and appreciate him being here tonight.
Thank you. If we have no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion.
Do I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, we don't adjourn, thank you.
All right, I got it.